Hello, everyone. I'm David Law, Superintendent of Minnetoka Public Schools.
And I'm Lisa Wagner, Minnetoka School Board Chair.
It has been a busy and exciting week with the start of the new school year. We're glad you're able to join us for our School Board Recognitions Program this evening.
We begin most of our regular board meetings with recognitions to highlight the positive impact that so many different people make in our district.
It is so important to take time to acknowledge and celebrate the many amazing accomplishments of our students, staff, and community members. This month is our first recognition program for the 2023-24 school year. We will be recognizing state qualifiers from our spring athletics teams, as well as some staff achievements that were announced over the summer.
Our September recognitions include: Boys Varsity Baseball, Boys Varsity Golf, Girls Varsity Golf, Boys Tennis, Boys Track and Field, Girls Track and Field, Theater Spotlight Award recipients from the spring production of Guys and Dolls, the National PhysTech Teacher of the Year Award earned by Minnetoka High School Physics Instructor Joe Cassett, the National School PR Association Awards earned by our Communications Team, and the National Award earned by our Community Education Team. We'll begin by recognizing our Boys Varsity Baseball team.
The Skippers had an outstanding spring. They qualified for the state tournament and tied with Edina for third in state.
The team is coached by Paul Twangie, Adam Getke, and Dave Maurer.
Let's hear more about the season.
Hi, I'm Paul Twangie. I'm the Activities Coordinator at Minnetoka High School, along with the Head Varsity Baseball Coach. This past season, 2023, was a superior year for us. We had a great group of young men. They came together, they enjoyed being together, which made us very successful. We finished third in state—I should clarify that—tied third in state due to air quality. We shut it down, did not play that game, but it was a tremendous year. I cannot tell you all how these young men worked. They're intelligent. We have the majority of them returning for the season 2024. Those that have left us in 2023, what a surprise. You made it for everybody by getting to the state tournament for the Minnesota State High School League. Outstanding year.
Hi, my name is Max Nelson. I was a junior last year on the baseball team, and my favorite part of the season was pitching in the state quarterfinals against Moundsview and winning that game. And just one thing I love about our team is how we always competed. We had great chemistry, and we always had fun.
Our 2022-23 baseball members include: August Berger, Lincoln Hightkamp, Colton Benedict, Ethan Binder, Nolan Brown, William Kepin, Evan Kepers, Daniel Muschard, Maxwell Nelson, Hudson Poole.
Milos Spasavec, Nathan Wheeler, Joseph Adams, Aiden Bartz, Karen Holland, William Johnson, Jack Kouchiver, Jacob McCuskey, Maxwell Pedersen, Owen Robinson, Braden Stortz, and Noah Viem.
Congratulations to all.
The Boys Varsity Golf team qualified for state this year, where they finished seventh place overall. The team was also the Section II AAA Champion.
The team is coached by Joseph Carlson. Let's hear from the team about the season.
Hey, guys. Just want to send you a quick congratulations on all that you accomplished this golf season. You guys worked so hard all year, and to make it to state is just something that you guys should be really proud of. Obviously, only eight teams make it, and so being able to participate in that is something hopefully you guys really enjoyed and cherished. You guys worked so hard all year for it, and so you guys really deserve that. And to see you guys come together during sections, and especially Day Two, working so hard, and then seeing all that hard work pay off and how excited you were for your teammates was really fun to watch. So, again, congratulations, guys. You guys had a great season. Really proud of you.
Hi, my name's Nevin Switz. I just graduated from Minnetoka High School, and I participated in men's golf. Our team was an underdog team in our section, and we knew that if we put two good rounds together, we would have a chance at winning our section. And our team was able to do just that. We played two great rounds, and we won our section and advanced to state as a team. And with that, it took confidence, and it took hard work and teamwork, but we were able to accomplish that as a team, and that was our goal.
The 2022-2023 golf team members include: Logan Beniac, Ryan Holzer, Patrick Horner, Caden Meyer, Nevin Switz, and Jackson Well.
Congratulations to each of you for the great year.
The Girls Varsity Golf team qualified for the state tournament this year, placing third overall. The team was also the Section II AAA Champion.
Let's hear more about the season.
Hi, my name is Sarah Martinson. I am the coach of the Minnetoka Girls Golf Team, and it is my pleasure and honor to recognize and acknowledge them for a season well played. The girls' team, consisting of Kylie Hansen, Selena Wu, Nicolette Wentland, Mia Alvecrog, Ruby Redding, and Mila Sloan, capped off a great season of play with their third-place finish at state. Here's the big plaque. And this really did cap off a great season. The girls won the late conference for the first time ever, won the section tournament by 10 shots, and had many personal bests and team bests as the season went on. We had four recipients of all-conference awards: Mila Sloan, Ruby Redding, Kylie Hansen, and Selena Wu. We also had three All-State Honorees in Ruby Redding, Selena Wu, and Kylie Hansen. Mia Alvecrog earned all academic honors, and the team represented themselves and the school so well all season. I couldn't be prouder to be their coach. I'm looking forward to next year. Congratulations, girls.
Our 2022-23 golf team members include: Kylie Hansen, Mila Sloan, Ruby Redding, Selena Wu, Mia Alvecrog, and Nicolette Wentland.
The team is coached by Sarah Martinson, Mo Haskamp, Jeff Wall, and Luke Boleen. Three members of the Boys Tennis Team qualified for state this year and made it to the second round of the tournament in their divisions. Congratulations to Maddox Lindell in the Singles Division, and Brody Barbo and Nathan Keys in the Doubles Division.
The team is coached by How Seigle. Let's hear more from him about the season.
Good afternoon, Minnetoka School Board Representatives, Superintendent Law, and our greater Minnetoka community. My name's How Seigle, and I'm the Boys Tennis Coach, and I have the privilege to acknowledge and recognize some of our standout student athletes from the Boys Tennis Team this spring. We have three representatives that not only made it, but participated very strongly at the state tournament. First of all, our II-A Singles Champion and Most Valuable Player on our team, Maddox Lindell, sophomore, had an excellent first-round victory and a very, very tight match against the number-three seed in the state before going down in the quarterfinals. And our II-A team of Junior Nathan Keys, one of our captains, and 7th-grade standout Brody Barbo, who is also our Most Improved Player of the Year by virtue of moving up the ladder the most, had an excellent first-round victory, also faced a top seed in the second round quarterfinals, and went down, but went down fighting. We think these three young men have a great tennis future, and we want to take this time to acknowledge them and all the time and effort they put in throughout the school year. Thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations again, tennis players.
The Boys Track and Field Team had an incredible season. The Skippers were second at the Minnesota State High School League State Tournament and third at the True Team State Tournament.
Individually, Senior Tobias Williams won the 100-meter dash and was runner-up in the 200-meter dash.
The team is led by Head Coach James Finch.
Let's hear more about the terrific season.
Hi, I'm Coach James Finch from the Minnetoka Boys Track and Field Team. I'd like to congratulate our team on another outstanding season in 2023. We had 10 all-conference athletes and 10 all-state athletes and set school records in five events this season. Those school records were Tobias Williams in the 100- and 200-meter dash, Max Westerlund in the 1600-meter run, which broke a 57-year-old record at Minnetoka. Our 4x8 relay broke a 43-year-old record, and our 4x1 relay not only set a school record, but a state meet record and ran the second-fastest time ever recorded in the state of Minnesota. It was all pretty exciting. I'd like to thank our school board, the district, our principals at MHS, everyone in the Activities Office, and especially the parents and families of our student athletes. I'd also like to thank and congratulate all the assistant coaches that made this season a tremendous success. It would not have been what it was without their expertise and dedication to our student-athlete success in all areas of life. Special shout-out to congratulate the girls' athletes and coaches on another incredible season full of success. Coach Jane Reimer-Morgan has been a mentor to me and was recognized as Minnesota's Girls' Coach of the Year. Congratulations, and thank you.
Our Boys 2022-2023 Track and Field Team members and alternates include: McLean Boji, Jackson Downen, Andrew Fighter, James Thomas, David Alred, Ryan Freeze, William Hairston, Hadi Ibrahim.
Tanner Smith, Jack Teddy, Tobias Williams, Nicholas Gillis, Alexander Gonikpin, Cosmo Guian, Tanner McPherson, Lucas Poe, and Max Westerlund. Our Girls Track and Field Team had a historic season this spring. The Skippers won both the True Team State Championship and the Minnesota State High School League State Championship, claiming their victory with a record number of points.
Two athletes won individual state titles as well: Claire Kohler in the 100- and 300-meter hurdles, and Lucy Hiller in the triple jump.
The Minnetoka team also won the 4x100-meter relay. The team members were: Lindsay Koch, Lucy Hiller, Ruby Pajibo, and Brianna Gible.
Let's hear more about the season.
I'm Jane Reimer-Morgan, and I'm the Head Girls Track and Field Coach at Minnetoka. This year, we had probably the best season that we've ever had in the history of our team, and we've won nine state championships. But this year, we were undefeated. We won the True Team State Championship for the second year in a row. We won the Minnesota State High School League State Championship with the all-time best score ever set in the state of Minnesota. We had two girls who broke the school record. Claire Kohler broke her record in the 100 hurdles and also in the 300 hurdles, and Evy Malik set a brand-new record in the 1600 meters, which had been set back in 2005. We have a GPA of 3.965, so the girls are also very, very smart, besides being outstanding athletes. Our coaching staff has been together for many years, and they do a wonderful job of getting the girls ready and prepare them very, very well for all their events. The work ethic of our girls has been outstanding, the attitude, everything has been just great. I'm so proud of the tradition of our Track and Field Team, and I've been here since 1985, so I've seen a lot of girls, and this group was truly amazing this year. Thank you.
Our 2022-23 Girls Track and Field Team members and alternates include: Evelyn Malek, Tatum Engabretson, Olivia Muehlstedt, Aleah Trojan, Bridget Koller, Zeal Cuckoo, Bentley Hendrickson, Avery Marasco-Johnson, Bryn Rusing, Maya Folken, Brianna Gible.
Ella Graham, Lindsay Koch, Claire Kohler, Charlotte Rail, Kaylee Lai, Kira LeBlanc, Anna McKinney, Megan Corkery, Lucy Hiller, Ruby Pajibo, Carly Pfeffer, and Elise Keenan.
The team is coached by Jane Reimer-Morgan, Christine Jensen, Krista Larson, Jenna Bus, Kim Haney, Sarah Kilow Beecher, Leanne LeBlanc, Tanya Andreskovic, and Christine Myers. Before we recognize our next group, we also want to take a moment to congratulate both Jane Reimer-Morgan, Head Girls Track and Field Coach, and James Finch, Head Boys Track and Field Coach.
Jane Reimer-Morgan was named Section II AAA Girls Track and Field Coach of the Year and the State AAA Coach of the Year.
Both Jane and James were also named as the USA Track and Field and Cross Country Coaches Association Coaches of the Year for the state of Minnesota.
Congratulations to each of you, and thank you for everything you do to encourage, challenge, and support our student athletes.
This spring, Minnetoka Theater presented an outstanding performance of the musical Guys and Dolls.
The cast and crew earned several state spotlight awards from the Hennepin Theater Trust, including Outstanding Achievement in Musical Theater, Overall Outstanding Performance, and Overall Outstanding Production.
Let's learn more about these honors and see a clip from the show.
My name is Jasmine Westland, and I'm a senior. Being an Assistant Stage Manager for the production of Guys and Dolls, one moment that was really impactful for me was having one final show of the year and celebrating it with the seniors before saying goodbye. One moment that I'm also really proud of is how hardworking and dedicated the crew were through every performance. There was so much behind-the-scenes work that couldn't have been done without the people that were there, and I am just so incredibly thankful and happy that I get one last year at Minnetoka Theater.
Congratulations, Minnetoka Theater students. Your passion and dedication to our theater program is extraordinary. The energy you all put in to spread joy to our supportive audience is palpable in every performance you present. The following clip is a brilliant example of how our student orchestra, crews, and actors work together to bring a script like Guys and Dolls to vibrant life onstage.
For the people, I said, sit down. Sit down, you're rocking the boat.
The people said, sit down. Sit down, you're rocking the boat.
And the devil drag you under by the sharp lapel round your checkered coat. Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down.
Sit down, you're rocking the boat.
I sailed away on that little boat. And by some chance, found a bottle in my fist, and there I stood. Nicely passing out the whiskey, but the passengers were bound to resist. For the people, I said, beware.
People said, beware.
People said, beware. We'll scuttle the ship, and the devil will drag you under by the tight underwinked rope.
Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, you're rocking the boat.
Now, we will recognize the cast, crew, and pit orchestra members who contributed to the spotlight awards. Congratulations to cast members: Ainsley Belial, Henry Helzdingen, Micah Hunter, Shiloh Lant, Yana Lotz, Peyton Pittenger, Easton Spiehar, Sadie Stillman, Mark Turcot, Maisy Wagner.
Christie Watrous, Samuel Abelson, Madison Ambrose, Alexandra Beckman, Lucy Butcher, Claire Chapman, Madeline Klow, Elijah Hempel, Olivia LaFontaine, Samuel Lewis.
Eric Lopez-Mallo, Vada Reddy, Evelyn Ring, Anna Rosen, Samuel Rosewarren, Samuel Villencourt, Naomi Vega, Charles Welch, Sidney Whiteside, Keegan Dossec.
Ashley Enns, Barrett Esselman, Erin Gailey, Sanskar Gupta, Valerie Kelling, Chase Kickhafer, Emily Kratz, Elliott Lee O'Halloran, Molly O'Neill, Ava West.
Reagan Alaman, Andrew Denhart, Elizabeth Fleming, Molly Geldert, Haley Guptel, Julian Heeb, Caleb Hunter, Bjorn Johnson, Ruby Mae Harrison, Wilson Lindberg, Maxwell Perdue, Sean Peterson, and Luke Rowan.
Congratulations to crew members: Riley Anderson, Quinn Born, Madeline Brown, Grant Conley, Olive Eigelmann, Andrew Jones, Eric Kowalski, Raven Lee, Alexander Mattson, Svea Moberg.
Kylie Rakers, Greta Ryerson, Lola Rolle, Lily Rubenchik, Isabella Seifert, William Steen, Lydia Stevenson, Liam Sullivan, Evan Solwald, Zinnia Tunks.
Caitlin Woodford, Alexander Balbuck, Vivian Barbara, Lana Berry, Chloe Choat, Cole Click, Grace Gabelhaus, Viviana Greenly, Ayana Griswold, Eleanor Hallman.
Kate Johnson, Amelia Clemmie, Lilly Kuzora, Leah Martin, Lucille Matthew, Ella Morrison, Silvy Oakman, Alec O'Connell, Ari Am, Rowan Rice.
Allison Richter, Max Rieger, Maren Sabans, Annabelle Schoenberger, Eva Stavro, Nico Stratton, John Armstrong, Natalie Ashland, Isabella Bloom, Sasha Cox.
Amelia Erickson, Taylor Hendrickson, Elizabeth Kearns, Lilian Kruger, Anna Mattson, Jasmine Westland, Ella Bricker, Marcus Carlson, Grace Fernandez, Mason Hagan.
Adelaide Howland, Jocelyn St. Louis, Julia Sernick, Catherine Tran, and Lillian Tunks.
And congratulations to our student pit orchestra members: John Linden, Graham Herman, Melissa Nelson, Michaela Goman, Ruby Martin, and Jenny Kwan.
Thank you to each of you for sharing your creativity and artistic expression. We look forward to seeing everything that the upcoming 2023-2024 theater season holds.
Next, we'll recognize the National Award earned by Minnetoka High School Physics Instructor Joe Cassett. Last year, Joe was named a Local Teacher of the Year by PhysTech, a national association of physics teachers.
This year, Joe was selected as the National PhysTech Teacher of the Year, a prestigious honor that recognizes his exemplary work as an outstanding high school physics educator.
Joe is a leader at Minnetoka High School. He has created a hands-on learning environment for physics students. By meeting students where they are, engaging them in deep discussion, and using humor and song in addition to direct instruction, he has been able to make physics an accessible and enjoyable experience.
The IB Physics Program has flourished during his time as a teacher at the high school. His intentional and successful efforts to connect students with physics has encouraged each of them to take on challenging science courses.
Thank you, Joe, and congratulations on this well-deserved award.
Next, we will recognize awards from the National School Public Relations Association.
Our Minnetoka Schools Communications Team has earned 15 national awards that recognize outstanding work in various aspects of communications.
The team received a Golden Achievement Award for its launching a leader communication strategy, which was the year-long and ongoing focus to connect Superintendent David Law with the Minnetoka Schools community when he became our superintendent.
The communications team also earned national awards of excellence for the design of the Our Vision for the Future booklet and a feature story about our sale program.
The team earned national awards of merit for the district's social media strategy and a feature story about skippers serving the greater good, as well as for the district's alumni magazine, annual report, and wall calendar publications.
Finally, the team earned national honorable mentions for several videos, an infographic, web design work, writing, and our kindergarten enrollment communication strategy.
Our communications team includes: Creative Director Daniel Campbell, Communication Specialist Mary Cornelius, Executive Director of Communications Dr. Jacqueline Geddy, Communications Assistant and District Service Center Receptionist Sue Ryan, and Audio-Visual Specialist Andy Smith. Congratulations, team. We're so proud of you.
Our final recognition for this evening is one for our Community Education Team. This spring, Minnetoka Community Education was named as a Top 10 Community Ed Program in North America by the Learning Resources Network, or LEARN. The award recognizes the depth and quality of our community education programming.
From events and enrichment classes to early childhood and family education, preschool and before-and-after-school care through our Explorers Program, Minnetoka Community Ed truly has opportunities for every person in our district to connect, learn, and have fun.
Let's hear a bit more about the award from our Community Ed Team.
Hello, School Board members and community members. My name's Tim Littson, Executive Director of Minnetoka Community Education. I'm privileged to talk about an award that we just received here in community education, and it's a Top 10 Community Ed Program Award in America. That's right, in America. The LEARN organization, Learning Resource Network, named us one of the Top 10 Community Ed Programs in America just recently. That's a major award, and we're so proud. And that's a team award for all these wonderful staff and wonderful community members, and the community members make it go, because community signs up for the wonderful programs that our staff creates and puts out, and all these events and programs really are the life of the community. And we hear that from our participants, and thanks to all of them, and really thanks to LEARN for doing this to us. And the LEARN organization has three main criteria. One is demonstrated program success, and we've done that through all things that we do. It's measurable, and the LEARN looks at criteria that they can measure. The second is leadership, and the third is improvement. And we have improvement across the board because we're always creating and trying new things. And marketing is a big part of all of it because it weaves right through everything that we do. We're just very thrilled that the LEARN organization has selected us as one of the top 10 in America. It's a big award, and it's really high praise to all of this wonderful community ed team that we have here in Minnetoka. Thank you, board members and community. Good luck with the rest of the meeting tonight.
Congratulations to the entire Community Education Team for this honor. We're so proud of their national caliber programming and look forward to another great year in 2023-24, including the launch of the Community Makerspace Classroom, which MCEC opens this week.
Families can learn more about opportunities and register online by visiting minnetokacommunityed.org.
That concludes our recognition program. Thank you so much for celebrating with us.
The September school board meeting will begin shortly.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 7, 2023 Minnetoka School Board Meeting to order. Can we all rise and say the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever and ever.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 7, 2023 Minnetoka School Board Meeting to order. Bonus. Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
So move.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Mike, any discussion questions additions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our first agenda item for the evening is community comments, which is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on an item included in our agenda in accordance with the guidelines. And we do have one person who wishes to address the board, so I'm going to go ahead and read our guidelines this evening. Welcome to the Minnetoka School Board's meeting. In the interest of open communications, the Minnetoka School District wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to address the school board. That opportunity is provided at every regular board meeting during community comments. Anyone indicating a desire to speak to an item included in the meeting agenda, except for the consent agenda and/or information that personally identifies or violates the privacy rights of an individual during community comments, will be acknowledged by the board chair. When called upon to speak, please state your name and topic. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific members or to any person who is not a member of the board. If there are a number of individuals present to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize the issue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. If you have written comments, the board would like to have a copy, which will help them better understand, investigate, and respond to your concern. During community comments, the board and administration listen to comments. Board members of the superintendent may ask clarifying questions of you in order to gain a thorough understanding of your concern, suggestion, or request. If there is any response or follow up to your comment or suggestion, you will be contacted via email or phone by a member of the board or administration in a timely manner. Please be aware that disrespectful comments or comments of a personal nature directed at any individual either by name or inference will not be allowed. Personnel current concerns should first be directed to a principal or executive director of the department, then to the executive director of human resources, then to the superintendent, and finally, in writing to the board. So tonight, we would like to welcome Tara Lee Stone in regard to a report on test results. Ms. Stone?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Law, Board Chair Wagner, and other members of the board. My name is Tara Lee Stone. I am a parent and district resident. Tonight, we are going to hear from Dr. Riga on the very impressive report about district test results, and I am once again here to ask you to review policy 626 in regards to how those test results affect our students. I see on tonight's agenda that you will also be looking at some other policies. Whenever you look at district policies, I hope you ask yourself three questions. What is the intended purpose of the policy? Is it fair, and does it apply equally to all? And does the policy align with our district's stated missions, beliefs, vision, and goals? As you know, policy 626 is the district's grading policy. It states that weighted grades will only be granted for AB and IB classes if a student both takes the exam and meets a required score. Some of you might be saying, well, college re-grades anyway, so why does it matter? My response, if the district policy doesn't matter, then we probably don't need it. My second response is much more nuanced and about the grade weighting policy in general, but I don't have time in the three minutes I'm allotted for that. Because this is such an unusual policy, I went back and looked through old board meeting minutes to understand where this policy originated, where and when, and I found out it was passed in March of 2016. And at that meeting, there was one brave board member who voted against the policy, and the reasons she gave were, and I'm taking these from the minutes from that meeting. Number one, the requirement of a certain exam score to earn weighted grade is very unusual. No neighboring district requires it. Number two, the weighted grade is meant to reflect completion of a course that is highly rigorous. This rigorous work is done regardless of the exam or the score on the exam. Weight is only reversed for students in ninth through 11th grade, as senior transcripts have already been sent out by the time the test scores are received. Number four, exam scores only reflect performance on the day of that exam. Performance on exams can be affected by many factors, including health and personal circumstances. And five, scores required to earn college credit vary widely by colleges and universities. I think these are all excellent points, and I hope some of you all think they are, too. My ask of the board is for you to formally and publicly review this policy, and in doing so, ask those simple questions. What is the purpose of the policy? Who or what benefits from it? Is it fair to all students? Is it equally applied to all students? And finally, does it align with the district's current mission, beliefs, visions, and goals? Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a report on the ACT, IB, AP, and SAT results. Superintendent Law?
Chair Wagner, members of the board, tonight, Dr. Riga will again summarize the scores from last spring's assessment rounds for the ACT test that students can choose to take, as well as the SAT test, and the course end assessments of the IB and AP. Included in this report will be trend data, overtime participation rates, average scores, and changes year over year. Dr. Riga?
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to share some highlights, some areas of growth, some celebrations with the results from all four assessments. One of the areas we want to highlight is with the ACT, the average score was a 26.0, and what I've been highlighting and I highlighted throughout the report is that that represented 69.6% of the class of 2023, and I'll go into that in a moment. It's actually two fewer students than took it the previous year, but the numbers taking the ACT have trended downward, especially since COVID. And here's some, the numbers of students from 2018, as high as 760, 2019, 726, all the way to where we are in 2023. And there's a few reasons for that, which I'll highlight in a moment. Our top 100, 200, 400 still remain strong, a 34.3 on a 36-point scale is extremely high, and I'll show you the highlights of the 200 and 400 as well, but that is similar to what we've had in previous years. And we've seen enrollment increases in AP, and now with a passing score of three, we've had 85.7% of students receive a passing score of three out of five on that scale. And our AP scholar levels are now at the highest levels that they've been all time, and they had a significant increase in all three areas that are measured. And there's be some additional information about the IB test and the changes that were this spring compared to what we endured from 2020, 21, and 22. So I'll highlight those here in this summary. So according to ACT results, we can see along the bottom of the screen there, we can see on the far right, the PLAN test, which is kind of what we used as a predictor in the past, but now we use the pre-ACT test now that the PLAN has been discontinued. And the pre-ACT helps students prepare, and we could see where their strengths and areas of growth are as they, from their sophomore year before they take the ACT test. And in English, it shows on the bottom left that there was a drop, and there's been a drop since its highest levels from 2016, 2017. Now it's at 25 for an average score. Math maintained where it was previously. Reading had a slight drop, but those high scores in those peak years also represented a higher percentage of students taking the test. It was also at a time when, there was a time when we did not have all students take the test as juniors, so we have so many scores for students, and some of the students choose to take the test to take the test, and they take it one time, and so lower scores can impact that. But also, one of the key things since COVID that's made a difference is there's many students that do not take the test multiple times, and we use the super score to calculate the score, so they don't have, instead of taking it two, three, maybe even four times or more, we've seen some students might take it one, maybe two times because colleges don't. Not all colleges require the ACT for entrance, so we're seeing, probably our peak was in those 2016, 17, 18 times, but as numbers of students continue to start taking the ACT again, we may see those numbers bump up a bit, but maybe not as high as we saw those in past years at those highest levels. And this is a breakdown of the ACT by ethnicity. So the last time we had national composite average for ethnic student groups was in 2021, and on the right-hand side, we can see Hispanic students averaged nationally a 16.9, African-American students 16.3, and so on. What we see here is Hispanic males showed an increase from the previous year after showing a decrease. You show African-American males with an increase as well compared to last year, and then Asian males and females with increases. Now, the year before, males saw a decrease and females saw an increase in those areas. And that happens, the fluctuation in results, just because also a main reason is there's not as many students in some of the student groups, so we will see those large swings in scores, but it's nice to see a rebound with those particular student groups. Again, the top 100, 200, and 400 really trending in the right direction, bouncing back from previous years. We can see where some of those peak years are, but the top 400, the top 100 is almost as high as it's ever been, and then the top 400 at 29.6 that, as we've talked about, rivals many of the private schools' top 400 for all students. So that's really impressive results by our students. We had 10 perfect scores for the class of 2023, so the year previously at that point, this point, had 12. So we keep monitoring that, and we've seen probably as high as 16, I think, in previous years, so we're right up there where we have been. This is an area that's measuring students who are ready for college coursework, and the cut scores there represent the scores that students need to meet that percentage or that threshold for English, algebra, social sciences, and biology. And what I'd like to highlight here is, like we saw on the average score, for example, like on the English test, we saw it was a 25, it had dropped from 25.5 to 25. We could see that also represented here where there was a drop in that percentage, meeting that cut score of 18, and then algebra, there was a drop. So those two contributed to the overall drop in the meets all four category, why we went from 63%, to 61. So keep an eye on that. And in 2016, for the SAT, that was when we started the SAT back on a 1600 scale, and now we have the critical reading and writing and math tests, so it was on that 2400 scale that it, up until 2016. And so since then, we've seen an increase in the number of students taking a test. We're now at as high a level as we've been at on the SAT. But one of the interesting facts about this, when we first started with the newer SAT, we started measuring, seeing students mainly in that 1200 to 1299 range and 1300 to 1399 range, and so last year, it shifted over where we've seen 34 of the most students in that 1400 to 1499 range, and then 27 students 1500 or higher in that range. So very impressive with those results on the SAT, now 130 students taking that test. And on this, we can see that, how the breakout is of the subtests, and in 2022, 23, it's comparable to those years prior from between 2016 and 2019. So now we're seeing more typical levels on the SAT as well. So with IB, and I want to thank Laura Herps, our AP and IB coordinator, and Missy Bem over at Vantage, and Stephanie Lolich at the high school for helping, giving me some insight with our IB scores. So what we noticed is IB worldwide averages had dropped pretty much across the board, except some areas like world language, which I'll highlight here in a second. But for the most part, we were wondering why did Minnetoka scores drop in IB, but AP was very strong, but there's, there's some, they gave us, helped me get some clarity on that. So in 2020, 21, and 22, there was an adjustment, adjusted assessment model at the time. So the scores were not calculated just on students taking the IB exam. They made the exam shorter, they took out parts of it, and then they also had, and teachers submitted items also to IB to be used in calculation along with the exam score. So that was happening, and the scores increased, the worldwide averages increased, our scores certainly increased in Minnetoka. So since the pandemic, this was the first year that they went back to the traditional assessment, and so that impacted everybody that took the IB test, just like in Minnetoka. So the more challenging sections were added back in, as typical of years past, and what I learned from, from Ms. Lolich was, and she's the only teacher that had the, even had that experience back from that traditional exam on there. That's not an excuse, it's just a reason that helps us understand a little bit all the factors is, but really the main factors are, is that the test was just different, and they tried to balance that out with IB to give kids the best opportunity to do well on the exam during COVID, but now we're back to where we were before. So we'll probably, we'll see those IB scores go back to where they were, what we've been used to seeing historically in my best estimate. So we've had an all-time highest number of students being tested in IB, and we had 55 students go for the, try for the diploma program, the IB diploma, they were in the diploma program, and 50 of the students earned the diploma, so that's 91% of students. So according to Laura Herps, about 70 to 80% earned that diploma worldwide. So we're very high levels here. We have a drop in the number of students who took multiple courses in IB, but we have very strong levels in our IB diploma recipients has just maintained high levels over the years since 2008, when we were at 27, and we've really doubled that number. This is the world language results I mentioned for IB. Now, worldwide averages were, scores were 5.1, so they actually increased in world language from a 4.6, and Minnetoka was on average at a 4.8. We saw three of eight tests score above the five-point mark on a seven-point scale. That's a high number, and that increased last year was two out of eight. French HL saw an increase. Now, there's not as many students in there, so there, again, those fluctuations will be pretty wide, but there's an increase of .5 points after dropping .6 the year before. And the French ABSL, HL, and German HL experienced significant increases from .2 to .5 points. And it shows our Chinese immersion scores on that exam dropped from 4.4 to 4.2, and Spanish immersion SL dropped by .1. And it shows a number of students, again, there is, is a lower number, but again, that's being compared, they're being also compared to, when we compare with the worldwide averages compared to students who are native speakers as well, who also may take that exam at a later time, when our immersion students take it during ninth grade year, and some of them take it during their 10th grade year, as opposed to later on junior year. So still strong results for our students, and it's nice that they continue to have that goal to try to take that exam early on. And these assessments are newer, the math analysis and approaches exams and applications interpretations exams. For our students, we surpassed the worldwide means in two of four areas, and we didn't have a computer science exam this year. Not as many students in this, so we're going to see the ups and downs, but pretty strong scores in the analysis and approaches SL and HL exams, and some scores that we're going to study a little bit more now that we have a few years of trend data. Learn more about that exam. And our AP results are showing the highest, some of our highest levels here with the number of tests taken and the students taking those tests. See historically where we were in 2023, 3,195 tests. See historically where we were in 2023, 3,195 tests and compared to 2005 with 917 tests. And it just continues to go up. So that, that AP culture at the high school and students taking more challenging courses all the way through, even from middle school, really impacts these results. Students, students learn early on from elementary really, but into middle school that they can take at least one AP course by the time, and test by the time they graduate high school. So I know that's encouraged and they're, they're, the numbers speak for themselves. So I just mentioned in the math, on the IB side, the math scores looked like they dipped a little bit. And on the AP side, they're higher. I think there's probably some, a learning curve there, but our teachers I know will continue to study those newer tests. But math improved in four or five areas, science improved or remained the same in five of seven areas. Spanish immersion students earning 4.0 and ninth graders and, for Chinese immersion, we're at a 3.6. So that is similar to previous years. Again, the other scores that we saw is like, so this is just ninth graders taking the test. So very solid scores averaging over a passing score of three. And AP macroeconomics had an increase. So that's the first time they've eclipsed the four-point mark on a five-point scale. And AP seminar class continues to attract many students, another increase of now 41 students. And then the government history exams improved or maintained in all, on all the exams that were offered. And they no longer do the national AP scholar, but the distinction and scholar with honor and AP scholar all significantly increased for our students. And now we're just, we're at all-time high levels by a significant amount. And for Vantage, so IB business SL showed a bit of a decrease because they, they also showed a significant increase when they went above five points for their average score, but now the mean score dropped below five to 4.7. And this is one I highlighted each year, and this is consistent with the psychology, AP psychology scores. There's, so we, throughout the Vantage report, we discussed the profile of the Vantage student and the non-Vantage student, and we compare their grade point average and ACT scores to get a, try to see what types of students are taking Vantage classes and non-Vantage classes. And when comparing the scores, we can see Vantage students earned higher AP scores on, on the AP exam, on, on the psych exam. But the ACT mean for Vantage students was a 26.4 compared to a 26, 27.5 for non-Vantage students. So they earned a higher exam score, but on their ACT, they were actually lower, and on the GPA, they were pretty similar. So that doesn't say anything negative about non-Vantage students, but it just shows that maybe the students that are taking AP psych in a Vantage setting, this is the right setting for them, because they're having a lot of success on the exam, and it continues to be that way year after year for them. And then, and then conversely, when I share the AP seminar as an example, and this happens throughout, for students that are in the Vantage program, they average a little bit lower GPA and a little bit lower ACT score, and that would explain also why they may have a lower AP exam score on average. It's still averaged with a passing score, but it was lower than non-Vantage. So again, it's not like a comparison between Vantage and non-Vantage, it just shows these, these are the types of students that are in, taking Vantage courses and, and not taking Vantage courses, and this is how they're performing. To me, it's predictable when we show how students are doing, when we look at their GPA and ACT score, it makes sense of their AP exam score. There's some recommendations for math teachers, focus on pre-algebra, algebra, and geometry. And for a science department, continue to focus on problem-solving skills, and that's something department-wide that they've been doing from high school all the way through elementary school, and that's been a focus for all our department chairs through science reviews and so forth. And world language teachers, as we saw those results, were a little bit lower to really study that exam and help, to be able to help their students in align what they're teaching in the classroom. So students are most prepared for those exams. And Vantage instructors, which they do a great job of this, but it's, I keep this recommendation on there, just to continue to monitor changes to curriculum, just to, to address any differences in the assessment performance. But we've seen consistency in that Vantage program, so they're continuing to do a great job monitoring that as well. So I'll stop there if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Riga. It's a lot of analysis, so I appreciate you bringing in all the rest of the team too to help with some of those insights. Questions that board members have for Dr. Riga in regard to this report? I know it was pretty detailed in our packet, so. Megan?
Thank you. So I don't expect an answer to this off the top of your head, but I was just wondering, we had talked, I think, last year a little bit about trying to bring some new students into Vantage with a more diverse, you know, student background. We had one of the student groups come and they talked about recruiting students of color into Vantage. Do we have any idea how they have performed comparatively on these tests? Or is that something that you could just follow up on maybe? Because I don't expect you probably have it in front of you.
I don't have that in front of me, but that, that's data that we do have and I can follow up on that.
Did you have a question? Patrick?
Yes, thank you. I think you were here earlier today, there was a community comment about the weighted grade policy, and it has me wondering if we look at last year's performance on these AP, IB, and other tests for which weighted grading is available, how many students scored at a level where they would not qualify for the weighted grades?
Although I do not have that number, we do keep track of that number and we can make that available too. We have studied that number last year, I know with this topic. So it's just not something that I include in this report with the results, but that is something that we, we have that information. I just don't know how, there's a lot of detail that goes into that, because there's, it's very, it's, there's a lot of nuance to that for students who, who didn't, who didn't take the exam. And so it's, it depends if they took it as a semester course or two semesters, et cetera. So there's different ways to look at it, but we do have the data.
And I guess the follow-up would be, if you don't know the number, I understand, but are there, does that mean that there were some students that took the test and did not score at a level that they would still achieve a weighted grade?
Yeah, there would be students that.
There were some?
I just don't have that number.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members in regard to the report? No? Megan?
Sorry, I just realized I didn't, I have just a follow-up question. So we have the demographic breakdown and we have by gender, but I didn't see it by special education in this report, and I feel like we've seen that previously. We have not?
No, we haven't used that in this, but in the other reports we do, we have a large population that take those exams, but it's not something we've included in here, but that's something that we can also look into. We have the data on it, so we can look that up as well.
Yeah, I would be curious just in terms of how many students that are taking these kind of rigorous classes while, you know, having an IP or some other specialized plan. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Other questions in regard to the results? No? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Riga, and we'll look forward to hearing those follow-ups as well. Thanks for looking into those in advance.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is our nutrition services update. This is a note, one I know we're looking forward to as it's part of our goal. Superintendent Law?
Chair Wagner, members of the board, I've had the chance to watch this group firsthand this week as they have done the Herculean task of implementing free breakfast across our system. And today I watched at scenic heights, kindergarten, first day of school, and the mix of free breakfast too. And I'm, I'm just going to give a shout out to everyone who helped with that process, including our director in that area. They have done amazing work. The swings at a site have gone from 30 students one day to 200 the next day. And it turns out, good food that other kids pass by and learn it's free, they double back and they, oh, get in line here and do this. And so Jane's team has been amazing at both providing. And then I, the other shout out I'm going to give them is, this is sort of a backhanded compliment, high school lunch was a mess on Tuesday because so many people love walking taco. Participation rates were very high. And so coming from not liking food to too many people wanting to get in line, that's, that's a compliment. But this is a board goal, so tonight Jane Bender is going to talk about all the changes that we've made in the last 12 months to address the concerns we talked about last year, increasing our staffing so we can provide better options and better quality for our students, and just demonstrating publicly, here's all the new things that are on the menu this year. I've had the chance to talk with Jane about this and she'll share with the board and the public everything that we're doing to improve what we're providing for our students in our schools.
Chair Wagner and board members, thank you for inviting me to talk with you today. Okay, we're just gonna get right into it. And I was already previously discussed, we're going to talk about staffing, where we were, how far we've come, and we've done a lot of work on that. Our breakfast program, we're very proud, we kind of thought the breakfast program might be a bigger mess than when we started it, and it's, it's really done well. And then we're also, whoops, we'll also discuss the menus, meals, and à la carte items, things that have changed in our variety and what we're giving the kiddos. Okay, so staffing, when we last talked, it seems like a year ago, it was only six months ago. And we had staffing, we were about 60% staffed six months ago. Today, we're happy to report that we're about 90% staffed. We have five of our kitchens that are at 100% staffed, and we have three more potential candidates in the hopper, ready to be hired in, on the kitchens. In late July, we participated in an operations job fair, was headed by Angie Flowers, and we thank, thank her and her team for that opportunity. And as a result of that job fair, we actually hired a cook manager, that's one of our harder positions to talk people into. And so it's a really, it's really exciting to have someone that's brand new to Minnetoka as well. So some fresh ideas there. And today she completed her third day with us in her kitchen. And then you can see from March, if you slip over to that September area, those aren't just added numbers, those are totally new numbers since we talked. So in the six months when we talked, we've had 37 more applicants, 22 more interviews, we've hired 18 more people. And we're, we have 10 open positions and three people in the, in the hiring process. We think the majority of the interest has come from an increase in hourly pay and giving more available hours, which make some of the benefits that we're offering benefit eligible, especially for health benefits. In fact, we allow our applicants, we ask them, would you like to work four, five, six hours? We're trying to be very flexible and, you know, conform, it's not work from home at all, it's all hands-on, but what can we do to be flexible on our part? Those that work the minimum of six hours a day are eligible for health benefits, so we think that's kind of a nice draw. In the fall of 2022, we had 17 positions that were eligible for benefits, and today we have 41 staff with, with benefits. So that's, that's pretty great and it's really wonderful because we hire a lot of people of our own community members. So it's nice to be able to do that for our community. Okay, so this is also kind of the, the numbers broken down in just a slightly different way. The total number of positions filled from March through September, you can see in March our positions were only 32 out of 58, so we're only 55% filled. And then now we have 49 out of our 58 positions filled, so we're at 90%. We also have a little bit better pool of subs, and subs, they pick and choose their hours. And, and kitchens, they can have a lot of different preferences and they do a really great job of, of filling in for us. They, they almost work full-time, or I should say kind of a permanent type of position that, because in terms of us being able to utilize them. And when, again, we're trying to be flexible, if they would like to work, we want to give them some hours, even if that means that we might even have a little extra help in the kitchen. That just, you know, relieves some of the pressure from some of the staff on those heavy menu days. Okay, with this increase in staff, we've been able to add more student services from our department as well. So the increase in staff members and hours makes the addition of the breakfast meal also much more manageable. So speaking of breakfast, let's talk about that a little bit. The breakfast program, we started planning that on a snowy day in March. I still remember my car swerving around. But we went to go visit a nearby school district that has a very successful breakfast program, and we wanted to say, why reinvent the wheel? Let's look at their best practice, practices, and let's bring those to the principals, to meet with them so that we can tell them what we've seen, what we've learned, and ask them how they envision the breakfast program to work in their schools. So in May, we set up appointments with each principal to discuss those list of items, things that we needed to consider where, when the student drop-off occurs, when students can come to the building, inside the building after drop-off, how long we have to serve them, when the breakfast line will be open, peer, peer support, and other operational considerations. And again, one of the most important elements of providing this breakfast program, get a little bit ahead of myself here, is that we need to make sure that we offer it to all the students. It can't be just offered to students willy-nilly like, oh, it's for you, but you guys came later. No, we have to make sure that we are inclusive of all the students in the school. So Governor Walz signed the bill and we got a lot of media attention. We were hoping a lot of parents were paying attention. We also sent out some communications via email to our parents at its specific school level. So elementary, middle, and high school, those parents each got an email stating the breakfast program, the lunch program is going to be free this year. We also sent out a mailing through the old-fashioned post office version, we gave them a letter and a tag. Superintendent Law helped fill a couple of those letters in the envelopes with us. And, and we mailed it to their home and asked the parents to put the tags on their backpacks so that in order to get the children to the classrooms with breakfast, we'd be able to have them come off the bus, grab a breakfast, we can scan the card that came in that envelope, and then we can, they can go right to their classroom. And the great part about that is that it, when breakfast in the classroom first came out, that was a brand-new concept, but that really increased participation. No loss of instructional time, the parents can take attendance, they can take who's having lunch that day, they can kind of even start their classes while children are eating. So that became a very good point. The first day of school, we served approximately 830 breakfasts. I know you might be interested in that, that was school-wide. The second day, we served 1,625. And today, we added kindergarten in the mix, we had 1,958. And I think kids are still kind of discovering the program too. Okay, one of the things we talked about too at our last, these slides might look familiar because I'm going to just put some check marks. We wanted to have two lunch choices daily. And this week we do, we've got two lunch choices daily, and our goal is to also have a hot lunch, two hot lunches daily, but still have a cold or a bento box available for the kids as well. We also expanded, we weren't, we really didn't have the staff to do any à la carte at the elementary levels. So now there's bottled water for purchase for those that don't want milk with their meal. And also we have second entrees for the third through fifth graders. The second, the bento boxes can be like a cheese and crackers and lunch, sorry, turkey meat, and also, or make your own pizza. And then also we want to introduce some entree salads for kids too. So it kind of gives a little bit more variety. We've also noticed an increase of people asking for a little bit more vegetarian options, so things that might not be naturally vegetarian, like a cheese pizza. For example, when we had our walking tacos, we invited the children at all grade levels, make your walking taco with refried beans. It's a great sorts of protein, and you could make it vegetarian if you didn't want the beef or the turkey meat with it. At the middle school, we're, we were serving just one choice as well, and we have two hot lunch choices daily. And then we also have an entree salad, which is usually a vegetarian salad, and a PB and J. Of course, that would be vegetarian as well. So those you can take and have all of the sides with the hot lunch meal as well, all the fruits, the veggies, make a nice, pretty big-sized tray. We were by fall, I'll go into à la carte a little bit more, but we were by fall offering a lot of à la carte beverages, but we added Gatorade and Capri Sun that was requested by the students. They, I think, kids maybe with older siblings might have found out it was at the high school. The other thing about the beverages was during COVID, a lot of the bottle caps were kind of stuck in the supply chain and crates out at sea. And so we just didn't even have the bottled beverages to sell, so it's really great to see a comeback of those. We have a snack cart at the middle school, it's at the end of the lunch line. Sometimes the kids would like to take chips or an ice cream treat, things like that. We've continued to offer that. And we will continue with our staff, even though we're doing the free breakfast meal program, we're still able to offer the à la carte breakfast program as well, side by side. So if you don't like what's for the free breakfast, maybe you do like what's for the à la carte breakfast, as long as your parents are okay with you spending that money. And again, as with all of the schools, we'll continue to offer the second entrees for them. And again, as with all of the schools, we'll continue to offer the second entrees for them. At the high school, we've got three hot lunch choices daily. The Cove and the Dock are open in the morning before school starts and at lunch, and so those are extended hours from what they were used to. We started that towards the end of the school year as we gained a couple of new employees. We continue to have à la carte entrees, trying to offer different varieties for the kids, including some vegetarian options with that. And again, we're looking at trying to add some more vegetarian options for the school lunch program, too, some more natural options there. And then we're continuing to bring in new products. Later this month, we're going to do Wahi Water, we're going to do a taste testing with the company, if you haven't heard of it, and we hadn't, we found this at a food show. It is water that elevates you to a better state of hydration with all-natural minerals and plant extracts that help you feel your best inside and out. So we're going to see what the high school kids think about that, because it doesn't have caffeine in it, but it does, you know, give you energy with your natural forms of vitamins and minerals. So we're hoping to see what they think about that, we could possibly bring that in. And then the Nautico Bowls, I mean, they're becoming nationally known, it's actually a Minnetonka student business, so we're very proud of that, and they started in our community. And so we'd like to bring them mid-September into our lighthouse area, that's another à la carte area. Kristin, the assistant, my assistant, had a really kind of a brainstorming moment saying, why don't we try to do some like limited and exclusive sales and bring in some of our local companies to showcase what they have? So maybe they have to have a little bit smaller sizes, we still have our USDA nutrition we have to work with. But if they're willing to do that, we'll see what the kids think of it, maybe they'll end up being part of our à la carte line, or maybe they'll come in once a month or every couple of weeks, and just add a little excitement and a little bit of fun for the à la carte lines for the older kids. Something to look forward to. So with the à la carte choices, they are fully back, and I'm going to give you kind of an extensive list here, and there will be a test at the end. So what I did was I kind of took off of our ordering guides. We've got the 1920 school year, the pre-pandemic, when everything was available, the 2023 school year. A lot of the things you see in blue was when things were just coming back, and we had a source these from even outside some of our major vendors that we would normally use. But we did, and then now our current vendor is able to also bring some of these items in. But everything you see in blue is kind of a new item that might have replaced something that we can either no longer get or the kids don't want, and they've asked for these other items instead, whoops. So you can see, this is just the high school. And the blue, again, are the new items. Okay, and you can see we've actually extended it a little bit. Now, things kind of come in and out, they roll in and out. It's not like you're going to have every single one there every day, but you have a very large variety in our à la carte areas. Now that we have all the areas open, it's easier to fill those up with more inventory. But, you know, as children or students ask for different items, and as new products come in and out, manufacturers are excited to have some shelving space as well, and they all follow our smart snack rules, we will see what entices the children and pleases them with their tastes. The middle school, very similar situation here, they have a little bit limited variety in terms of we have less shelf space that we can utilize, less à la carte area, but we still have quite a bit here. We're not quite, maybe have maybe 10 items less than we had in the 1920 school year. We had to pull ice cream treats for a while because they were discontinued, but they're coming back, and once we add those 10 more items, we'll probably be up to speed there as well. Okay, so recapping all of that. Whoops, I kind of, okay, how am I going to go back? There we go. So just kind of to put everything in a nutshell, just by adding the more full-time positions and the benefits and increasing our wage has attracted those staffing candidates to us. We've increased the staffing levels, and those have allowed our menus at all the school levels to have more options and variety. The Dock and Cove are very busy with new customers that haven't seen the high school's à la carte areas. I mean, we have some kids that, because of the pandemic, and then they were going to be freshmen, and then maybe they were at school, being homeschooled. So some of them haven't really seen the high school at full strength, so they're pretty excited about that. And then we're bringing in the new local products as limited buys in the lighthouse area. We're going to kind of just revamp that whole idea and how we want to sell things in that area. Hopefully add more variety and excitement to the à la carte line at the high school, something for just the older kids. And then adding a third line of service at the high school. We've added that over the summer, we actually, was a kind of a coincidence that the high school also changed from five lunch periods to three lunch periods, and now we've got an extra serving line, so we can actually service 50% more students faster. So that was perfect timing, you know, for us to have that open up. Here's our fun fact, over the last school year, we served all together, if you consider our à la carte and all of our meals, we served over 1.3 million meals for the school year. So we're our own little restaurant business. Okay, and then just finally, I invite you to host you for a lunch, breakfast. If you'd ever like a behind-the-scenes tour, we're more than happy to show you around and also introduce you to more of our staff. And at this point, I just open it up for questions.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks to you and your team. I know it's been a lot to start the school year off, but we really appreciate you, you know, all the effort that's been put into this, because it's incredible to see all the new things and exciting for the students as well.
Great, thank you.
Questions the board has about nutrition services?
I actually have an observational comment. As I've dropped off my daughter the last few days at school, at elementary school at Excelsior, unintended benefit of opening the doors earlier is that there is almost no line in the back entry area for Excelsior.
Ooh, good to know.
Yeah, so hopefully we're seeing that benefit across the district, especially in elementary schools. We're seeing a reduction just because of that extra drop-off time.
Patrick?
Yes, thank you for that report. I appreciate you've been doing a lot of work to get breakfast rolled out. And I'm curious about the staffing levels. You talked about being a 90% staffing levels. My memory is that staffing for nutritional services took a big hit during the pandemic. Are you, when you say you're 90%, is that back to pandemic levels? Are we just at a different new normal after that?
Well, if I'm going to be perfectly honest, and I'm kind of an open book, so I will be, when we ended the year at the end of the pandemic, when we had to go, when we started doing the meals during the COVID and we had layoffs, we found out that we could be multitasking better. And we learned a lot, we learned a lot of different ways of doing things, we learned ways of staging things. And so we're at 90% for where we want to be and the positions we want to fill. So pre-pandemic, or during, yeah, pre-pandemic, we were probably more at between 75 and 80, and now we're looking to fill up to about 58 to 60. So we don't have as many to fill, and I think if we were going to try to get up to that 80, we'd have people walking all over each other in the kitchens. We've really moved things around and changed things up enough that it's become a lot more efficient.
Are you soliciting feedback from the people who are actually doing the work? I imagine there's going to be a lot of a learning curve for this new rollout of breakfast. I'm just wondering how you solicit that and what your plan is to implement the feedback you get.
Yep, well, you know, again, we have open-door policies. For my staff, how are things going? And Kristin and I try to get to all of the schools on a regular basis, whether it's a new program or not. And then also, the principals have been giving us feedback. They're going to let us know if kids are getting to class in time, if instructional time is being stepped on, you know, do we need to open earlier? We just all are kind of back to, let's be flexible, we're all learning, and we all know that we might have to change things up at any given time to try and make things work. And that's really the whole point, and our whole staff is so behind. Let's just feed the kids, and, you know, just to have free meals for all of the kids is just so great. We don't worry about lunch in accounts, we just get to feed you and smile at you, and it's just a really very relaxing thing for the cashiers that we'd normally have to kind of keep tab on who had money in their accounts or things. It's easier to be a little bit more flexible when you're not worried about that, too. So it's helped tremendously. But, yeah, we do ask for feedback, and again, open-door policy, open-email policy, we take all of that pretty seriously.
Anybody else? Megan?
I just wanted to comment that I think it's really great that you didn't start by reinventing the wheel and that you went out and looked at what other districts were doing, because I think it has deployed much better than it probably would have if you hadn't taken the initiative to do that. And I would like to share that there was a lot of enthusiasm for Cheerio bars around our neighborhood this afternoon, so you should probably brace for giving out more breakfasts next week. Because I think words getting out, I had one very sad about missing Cinni minis yesterday because the bus was late. And so I think you're going to see more and more uptake on that, because I think there's a lot of positive chatter around it. I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thanks for sharing that.
Anybody else? No? All right, well, thank you again, and please thank your team on our behalf.
Oh, definitely.
I know that it's, like I said, I know it's been a big change for you guys this year, and it is great that you can spend time smiling at the kids and giving them food, right?
Absolutely.
Because that's really what it's about, so.
Yeah, it's a feel-good job.
Yep, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are going to, we reviewed a number of policies at our last study session, and we're going to go through the approvals of these policies. We are going to take them, just so the board is aware, one policy at a time. So that'll give you a chance, if you have any questions or comments or anything you want to discuss, we'll just take each one, and we'll go through them as we go through. So Superintendent Law, I don't know if you have anything broad brush you want to add?
No, just to remind the public that policy changes come for a variety of reasons. Sometimes policies are changed at the legislative level and rolled down to the district to be implemented. Sometimes policies are changed because they've become outdated for our practices or we've gathered feedback from within our system to address those. But tonight, you'll see policies that are changed for a variety of reasons, and our executive director of human resources, Angie Flowers, will share the rationale for the change and highlight the changes, and then the board can approve them, starting with license status policy 424.
Thank you, good evening, Chair Wagner, Superintendent Law, and members of the board. I have six policies in total for your consideration tonight as a result of recent changes to state legislation. I will be asking you to approve each of them tonight as a follow-up to the study session in which we discuss them in detail. I'll be going through each policy and providing you a summary, starting with 424 license status for teachers. Pelsby has a requirement to report on all of the items that you are seeing listed in that revision in your policy for 424 based on new legislation. It's been actually added to the continuing contract state statute in an effort to support retention of BIPOC teachers. So because of that, we've added it to our policy. In practice, we do already report this data to MDE annually, and I'm asking for your approval of this policy as revised.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 424 license status as presented?
So moved.
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Patrick? Discussion or questions about this policy? No? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records.
Thank you, that policy is, in other words, our student data privacy policy. The board determines what is public student directory data. Pursuant to new legislation, both names and addresses can no longer be included as public directory data. So as you'll see, those have been stricken from this policy in the revisions, and I'm asking for your approval of policy 515 as revised.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records as presented?
So moved.
Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Megan? Any questions or conversation around policy 515? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Our next policy is policy number 534, equal educational opportunity.
Thank you, this policy mirrors what is likely coming from the federal level, Title IX changes that will ensure that transgender students have access to participate in activities and sports. The revisions in this policy reflect the state legislative changes and list factors that must be considered for all sexes and all races. Some examples include having a variety of sports that reflect the interest of all students, along with provisions for equipment, coaches, and practice time. Our athletic director has stated this will not impact our current practice. However, we're making the revisions to ensure compliance with the new state legislation, and I'm asking for your approval of policy 534 as revised.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 534, equal educational opportunity as presented?
So moved.
Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Mike? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next policy is 516.1, overdose medication.
This is a new policy before you tonight. We developed it to align, again, with the new state requirements. And for this one, it's specifically nasal nalu zone of having two nasal doses per school site. Health office staff have been trained on the medication, administration, and this policy in particular. And in addition, they have specific procedures that they will use as it relates to this policy. With that, I'm asking for your approval of the new policy 516.1.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 516.1, overdose medication as presented?
So moved.
Mike? Is there a second?
Second.
Chris? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is policy number 419, tobacco-free environment.
This policy, tobacco-free environment, includes revisions to better define vaping, including the vaping prevention instruction that's required for grade six through eight. This policy sets clear expectations and has clear definitions about vaping and tobacco. In addition, there was a change to state law to allow American Indian students to have loose tobacco on school property for ceremonial or ritual purposes, and that is now reflected in this policy as well. I am asking for your approval of policy 419.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 419, tobacco-free environment?
So moved.
Katie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mark? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our final policy this evening is number 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school.
Thank you. I'll start by speaking about policy 417. Policy 417 currently serves as the drug-free workplace policy and also lists consequences for students for violation of that policy. The district is recommending a separate policy, the one you have before you tonight, for drug-free workplace, 418. We will later bring revisions to policy 417. When we do, the new policy 417 will focus solely on the consequences for students, whereas policy 418 is a comprehensive policy consisting of expectations and definitions for staff, students, and visitors regarding a drug-free workplace. In addition, given recent changes to cannabis law, we believe it was a good time to create a comprehensive drug workplace policy. Although cannabis has been legalized at the state level, it is still illegal at the federal level, and as such, is illegal in our schools. This policy clearly prohibits marijuana and cannabis. And the other last factor of this policy that I would point out is the education component that will go into effect in the year 2026, 2027. And we also have that noted in here as well. I am asking for your approval for the new policy 418.
Could I have a motion to approve policy 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school?
So moved.
Chris? Is there a second?
Second.
Mark? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Flowers. Lots of policies tonight, so.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is the acceptance of the bid for the HVAC replacement at Deep Haven Elementary School. Superintendent Superintendent Law?
Chair Wagner, members of the board, one of the things that Minnetoka does very well is be financially efficient and respectful of the taxpayers' money by being proactive in the bidding process. Tonight, our executive director of finance and operations, Paul Bourgeois, will cover three separate bids for improvements across our system. You all know that over the last decade, Paul has done a great job proactively setting up our facilities to be easy to maintain over time. Tonight, we'll hear about air movement places, HVAC ventilation and also some interior surfaces. With that, I'd open up for Mr. Bourgeois.
Thank you Superintendent Law, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are actually asking you to accept bids for summer of 2024 work, which is going to be paid for out of fiscal $25. And actually, some of the work will fall into fiscal 25. But we try to be first out of the gate, so to speak. The early bird gets the worm in terms of low bids. So we are pushing hard to get these projects out the door in terms of design. There are others out to bid that are part of the 10-year plan and they'll be coming, a bevy of them will be coming in October, at the October meeting. So the first one is for replacement of two existing heating, ventilation, air conditioning units at Deep Haven Elementary School that were installed in 1996. They have something, a coolant in them called R22, which was actually banned in terms of new production of R22 as of January 1st of 2020. So it's important to get these units replaced before they fail. And we've been doing that actually since then and although we actually bought a stash of R22 just in case because lead times on these units are actually 40 to 45 weeks. So if one would go down and you don't have any R22 that you could get, you could be without HVAC in that area for a while. Anyway, so that's a little bit of a background on that, but the budget estimate for this project was 245,000. The two units that we're asking to replace, the bid on them was from, the low bid was from Craft Mechanical LLC at $149,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Could I have a motion to accept the low bid of Craft Mechanical LLC in the amount of $149,000 for the replacement of R22 HVAC systems at Deep Haven Elementary School in the summer of 2024? Patrick? Is there a second?
Second.
Katie? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the acceptance of bid for cabinet replacement and wall resurfacing at Excelsior Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Law, members of the board. We would like you to approve a project that is to replace walls, I'm sorry, wall surfaces and then cabinets in the part of the 1958 constructed section of Excelsior Elementary School, which is the one-story section. It's actually one of the wings of our building that along with about 1.1 million other square feet is now Medicare-eligible, 65 years or older. So, but the thing is, is our replacement cost for approximately one point, just under 1.9 million square feet of building space is insured at just under $900 million. So putting steady dollars into these to continue to update them and maintain them and try to keep them in a state of good repair is going to be the most cost-effective option for our community in the long run. The budget estimated for this project is 509,600. The low bid was from Morcon Construction Company in the amount of $288,031.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the low bid of Morcon Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $288,031 for the replacement of the cabinets and wall surfacing at Excelsior Elementary School in the summer of 2024?
So moved.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Katie? Any discussion or questions for Mr. Bourgeois?
Quick question.
Chris?
Just looking at the bids, I mean, even the high bid is 80% of the budget estimate and it's almost half that. Anything about the project that made it come in so low?
You know, we do, we have ATS to help us with our estimates and they will look at market costs and try to project inflation and we're projecting some inflation. But the other thing is, is we are out early, so we think that that came in in our favor. It's, you know, and a lot of it is just how many people are bidding and how hungry they are for the work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our last bid this evening is the acceptance of the bid for unit ventilator replacement at Clear Springs Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent Law, members of the board. We are working on a project for 12, or asking to accept the bid for 12 projects on the east wing of Clear Springs Elementary School. This is for vertical unit ventilators that have been installed in the past. They were not air-conditioning capable. As we have been going around replacing these over the years, we have been steadily upgrading them to air conditioning. And of course, with it from a couple of days ago, we thought there might have been a heat wave and we've been steadily adding. We're about 76% air-conditioned. When I got here in 2007, the high school was air-conditioned. The two middle school media centers were air-conditioned and we had window air conditioners in all the offices of the buildings. We've been steadily, as we did additions, of course, those had air conditioning capability. Much more, we'd also do rooms adjacent to, if we had a little bit extra money, be able to punch through some walls and add a few more rooms so that our summer projects would get more air conditioning. We are up to 76% of the buildings air-conditioned as of August of all the classrooms. We have 118 classrooms left to go. And in our long-term maintenance plan, of which this is part of it, we have 59 scheduled for next year and another 59 for summer 2025, at which time all buildings will have air conditioning in the classroom, in every classroom. So, but that'll be at a cost of about 8.5 million between now and then. So it's expensive, but we're able to do that as we replace our unit ventilators with new unit ventilators that have air conditioning capability, just to kind of give you a big picture. So this actually will complete Clear Springs Elementary School and that's a school that is heavily used in the summer for various programs. The budget estimate was 793,600 and this one came in a little bit tighter at 786,000, but it came in within available resources. And Morcon Construction Company also had the low bid and we're requesting that you approve them to do that work for us next summer.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Could I have a motion to accept the low bid of Morcon Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $786,000 for replacement of unit ventilators at Clear Springs Elementary School in the summer of 2024? Megan?
Second.
Katie? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your proactivity. It really does make a difference, so thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Katie? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, board reports. I know, you know, just getting back into the school year, but does anyone have a report for this evening? Nope? Okay, superintendent's report, Superintendent Law?
Chair Wagner, members of the board, I've had the privilege of being in our buildings this week. Just to, I want to give a huge shout out to our, first, our staff. We're just being visible. When I walked into Clear Springs this morning, I could barely get down the hallway with all of the help for staff to make sure those kindergartners had a great start to the day. And that's been pretty reflective. I was over at MMW on the first day of school. At the end of the day, I think I saw two dozen staff outside trying to make sure parents got through. So I want to give our staff some shout-outs for they're going the extra mile to make sure our kids have a good experience and our parents have a good experience. I'll also give Board Member Rema Call a shout-out as he was also out there with me directing traffic at MMW day one. Thank you for that. And just a lot of appreciation for our parents as they patiently re-figure out the school routine. It's been a good start to the year so far. People, they'll say, well, how's the school year started? I'm starting to feel the teachers feeling a little bit more rested, excited to come back. The post-pandemic anxiety of getting back into getting better and meeting students' expectations is back. And so it's been a good start to the year and I'm excited to see how this fall goes.
Great, thank you and welcome back to everybody, right? Do we have any announcements this evening? Katie?
I just wanted to share with the community a couple of ways that they can continue to show their school spirit by shopping in our Booster Store in Tonka Pride sales that are coming up. Tonka Pride is going to have their fall sale here at the District Service Center on Friday, September 15th, 3 to 7, and then on Saturday, the 16th, 8 to 1. And the Booster Store is open at the high school every day, 11 to 2. And they also are having extended hours every Thursday, 5 to 7, so you can shop at the Booster Store or here at the DSC. And 100% of those profits go back into our schools with PTAs, PTOs or with the high school athletic clubs and activities. So it's a great way to support your school and continue to show your Tonka Pride school spirit.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements?
I would just mention, as you all know, there is a school board election coming up this November and the League of Women Voters is sponsoring their annual forum. That will be on September 12th, Tuesday, September 12th, at the Minnetoka High School Arts Center and that will be also available on live stream. So you can get more details at the League of Women Voters.
So the other thing I should probably mention as well for that fall sale is our homecoming that is the parade in Excelsior. That is a ton of fun for the community to come down, watch the high school floats that are in the parade. It's a great way to support our schools. And then also our football game on Friday night, the 22nd, 7 o'clock.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Katie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mike? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.